This is that coffee.
Frustrating.
It's falling out of that folder.
Which was that?
It probably just fell out of there.
Put that in the reservation folder.
Oh, yeah, that's. Yeah, okay. It's on.
Do you have all this signed?
No, I don't because I have a whole bunch. I said I'll do it right after this. Thank you. Okay, it is 10:48. We have a work session right now and if you would just state your names for the record because it is being taped so you know.
Sure. So, my name is Paul Breke. I'm the city manager with the City of Morgantown.
Mark Presides, deputy mayor, City of Morgantown.
Okay, and we'll open it up to you all since you asked to come.
Okay. Well, I think we're here to talk about Bow Park, first of all, and the needs that Bow Park has expressed to us and also the needs that the community has expressed to us. It came to our attention in a roundabout way through the medium, as it were, of the Haymaker Forest. There was an objection to the price, which I certainly understand, but in the process we've learned something very valuable is that people want Bow Park fully funded. They want Krebs Pool and Marilla Pool to be upgraded, to be nice facilities. Many people would like to see our ice rink become, have a new ice rink, potentially with two sheets or at least one full sheet of ice and a studio sheet that could be opened year-round so that our athletes here could practice and we could also host summer programs, hockey camps, figure skating camps, et cetera. And as I said in my remarks here, it would also offer the community a great chance to bring in the Penguins or a minor league hockey team to improve WV's hockey standing. Hockey's a very, very popular sport in this area, in part because of the recent success of the Penguins. I know they didn't win the Stanley Cup this year, but they've had some great teams and there's a real vibrant interest in ice sports in our community. And we do have an advantage over Pittsburgh in the sense that Pittsburgh has competition. So, there are several sheets of ice that one can go to in the Pittsburgh area, whereas in Morgantown, we are really the only game in our immediate vicinity. So, I handed out the study that was conducted by Bow Park through an independent agency that indicates that potentially a full sheet of ice plus a studio sheet could really be viable in our community. The question is how we can fund it. We're looking, of course, at grants and so forth and our city manager has ideas in that respect. I have been advocating for a levy that would go to the voters. I thought about a levy to fully fund Bow Park and that's a price tag of about $40 million and I realize there may be some economic constraints. We wouldn't want to put up a levy that would be self-defeating in the sense that people don't want to vote for something that'll tax them in the thousands of dollars. But if we could craft a levy, say specifically toward the pools or toward an ice rink or toward some specific need that needs to be addressed immediately, and I do think there are immediate needs, it would be great to cooperate with this commission on something that would be mutually beneficial to the city and the county, which are the same thing in some respects. And again, I think this would not only be a good thing for Bow Park. Now, the rink itself, I've heard anecdotally that it's the only money generating component of Bow Park. That may or may not be true, but the additional revenue that would be generated from people coming in from outside our community to spend money at our restaurants, to spend money in our hotels, to just pour money and spend time in our communities would greatly benefit the businesses and individuals who are part of the City of Morgantown and the greater Morgantown area. So, I see this as a real economic generator, the rink for sure. The same is true of the pools, of course. That is a highlight of what we do in the city. The Marilla and Krebs Pools have a historic connection to citizens of our community and during those hot summer months, that's where people go. I know and understand the efforts out in Mylan Park, but many of the constituents I serve and that my fellow councilors serve simply cannot get out there. From Norwood, which is one of the communities I represent in Saberton, it would take 19 minutes to drive out there, simply to drive, to reach the door, the front door of the facility. And that's on a no-traffic day. That was on a Saturday. Little more difficult during the football season, the WV season, and that assumes that they have the time to get out there. It assumes they have a car. Many of them do not. Many of them have been telling me they need a rec center or YMCA in their community, especially on that side of town that would not be able to easily access the facility out in Mylan Park. So, we're dealing with, or looking at a constituency that can't use that nice facility that's going to be built there. So, it's necessary to maintain Marilla Park and Krebs Park in a way that's meaningful to those people we serve.
So, when they pause, I'll jump in. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to really have the...
Waterboard.
I could go on for more than...
No way we would. To have this conversation and really to Commissioner Secora's credit of really engaging in this dialogue and looking at the broader picture. I think what we're hoping to get is some sense of, you know, what the interests would be if we were to pursue that and also understanding what the timeline, deadline requirements are if you were to amendable to having something like that. You know, November is actually, and I blink away, and so we realize there's lead time that's needed through the election requirements, through the election board, and then, of course, through this body as well to get formal approval.
So, to that point, and I asked the clerk to stay, because I know that that was the question is what the timing is and I have asked the clerk to stay on because she sees our information in regards to the timing for those type of things for elections. One of the things that, again, I want to make sure we understand what you're proposing, what you bring to us. What we, our job at that point would be to make sure that it, I mean, we're not supposed to be advocates of what you're bringing to us. We're just going to judge it. Did it meet, did you check the boxes?
Right, I understand.
Did the numbers make sense? You know, at that point, we're, it's not our job to say, "We don't think this is a worthwhile effort and we reject it." No, we can't do that. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And we certainly want to, again, I've been, since I came into office, wanted to find ways where we can work together and find things that we can work on and, you know, one of the things that comes up a lot is recreation and park services and, you know, we go back to what it was and then how it morphed and maybe, you know, I think we need to have that larger conversation. So, I'm always for that, you know, having a conversation about how we would work together. But I did, I don't know how long Carrie has available, but I did, in regards to the process question and the timing before you would actually get something, if you're suggesting that you'd come forward with something for November's ballot.
Well, typically, we have the language that is needed to be put on the levy three months before the ballot is printed. We could probably, we could probably hold off until the first of September to get the, to get the levy language if necessary. The other consideration that I would put out is the levy would need to be, I think, approved ahead of time by the state tax department.
Correct.
And I think that there may be something because we've already passed a recreation levy. And I think that you may need to do some investigation about if you can put a second, that first levy, I believe, was a five-year levy and I don't know if you can put another levy on for the same thing while you pass that one on.
Until it expires.
So, I think maybe someone needs to ask the state tax department or get some kind of legal guidance about that. And then the other observation that I would make is, is this supposed to be just a municipal levy for municipal, municipal voters or is this supposed to be a county-wide levy for all the county residents like the previous one was? If it is a municipal levy, then that's really something that you all should put on at your next April or municipal election.
This would be a county-wide.
Okay. And I would say the, you need to get some kind of guidance if you, if you could put a second levy up while you're paying for the first levy already.
Out of the means of cooperation, I did watch all four hours last night and I spent most of the night preparing for this. I agree exactly with Carrie. I have some data information. I ran off the entire 80 pages of, I'm going to give you a copy of the excess levy guidelines, but I do want to share something that she said. She's correct. The 90 days is being nice. I have a lot more for you. But I want to read the law and it's actually, as much as she can try and fluctuate, you have to give it to us 71 days before, at a regular or special meeting, the governing body adopts an order set out as required by law submitting the question to the voters. And that's, so I have this. This is the actual special, 71 days.
71 days prior to the election.
The election. So, again, you're talking, was that, like she said, mid-August. She was giving you the fluctuation of September. If you go by what they have said, you're looking at probably mid-August and that's before we have a public hearing and we review it. So, you're looking at another month for that. So, the timeline is now July, which means, and, you know, so that would be something I would, you know, ask you. And I really appreciate Carrie saying that. My first concern, we went through this two years ago for the first time, and the first question I would ask is can you have two multiple levies for the same thing? And I want to get a clarification, watching the program last night, and it's very clear that the money that you had designated in this last levy that I have here on May 16 can only be given to the specific requirements. You cannot take that $2.5 million and bring it over to another levy. And there was discussion about that and I want that very clear. It can only be for the specific requirements that set it on the levy. So, that changes some of your concepts of, you know, using the $2.5 million. So, I did, that, I thought that would help you understand that. I also have something which I think is very important. I guess before I go on, I guess here's my big question and this is where I was confused after hearing whether it was a city, whether a county levy, you know, and you were asking that. And I wrote this down to be as clear as possible. I said, "Before I would personally commit to something, it's important for me to understand, what are you really asking the county to commit to?" And that's where I'm confused. So, that's my question back to you.
The county commission?
Commission, sorry.
Or county?
The county commission, because then I know what, yeah. So, what is it you...
To help us with the process, as Commissioner Secora said.
But we're not allowed to.
No, no.
That's what I want to get real clear.
Well, no, we present, check the box kind of levy. If we have all items that can be checked, it seems like that's all that's necessary to do.
Right. When I listened to the program and it was very clear, there were statements made that we would sit down and work together on this levy. And going through it, and I'm sure Carrie will respond because I, I know this for 100%. We cannot be a part of coming up and preparing for working with your levy as a commission.
We wouldn't ask you to.
But that was stated. I just want to go. I want to clarify what was stated last night and get that...
This is the kind of cooperation we were talking about.
No, I was, and I agree with you, Mark. I was listening to it. Then again, I was in the background and I was doing other stuff, so, but I did hear other council people, you know, saying that, you know, "We need to work with the county." And I don't think they were saying, "Work with the county to make this work." They were saying, "Work with the county." That, I guess that was the flavor because you were saying, "Hey, we need to do this." And they were saying, "Well," and again, if I'm putting words in their mouths, correct me, and the rest of the council was saying, "Well, we all agree. We agree with your passion. We agree with what you want to do, but we think that the first step of the process is working with the commission, the county, on a broader plan."
Exactly.
You know, how we're, how we move forward. So, though, both things can happen, but I don't think that they were saying that we need to sit down with the commission and figure out this.
No, no, absolutely not, no. And I, there's some disagreement about how to approach this. I have a certain opinion about how best to handle this and perhaps some members of council support my opinion, others have a different approach. And so, it's not unanimous. It doesn't need to be necessarily, until ultimately we need four councilors to agree to present a levy to you. And that's, that's what we'll work on and see what happens.
And ultimately, I interrupted Paul, so I hope you can remember what you were talking about. But one more, I mean, if you're, and again, that's, that's the purpose of these work sessions. We sit and we talk.
Correct.
And we can't take any action in this. It's just a forum to talk and we should have more of these. But from a process question, if you put something on the, on the agenda for November, it wouldn't even take effect till 7/1/19, correct?
Well, it would, you could take it by...
Yeah, you can't.
Detach, yeah.
Pardon?
Go ahead. It has to be a certain date to get detached.
That's up to the state tax department.
Yes.
You, that would be what the state tax department would review when you presented the levy to them.
I would think that they'd certainly say start 7/1. I mean, I don't how you read, yeah, how you do everybody's tax tickets. So, again, for your planning purposes, that 7/1 would even be the day before you can even start collecting taxes. In a perfect world and everything works...
Well, you mentioned the date September 1st. You think that's a reasonable time. I know Commissioner Bloom seems to object to that, but...
I don't object. I'm reading exactly...
Carrie, the, what is the election date?
November 6th.
November 6th.
Tuesday, November 6th.
So, we need to count back 71 days.
It's 8/27. So, we're talking, 8/27 is the actual 71 days out from the election.
Right.
Right. And when I, when I was saying September 1st, I just roughly know when I start to get our media back from our election vendor so that we have to, we have time to put it on all of our equipment and make sure that we get all that process ready to go for early voting. As long as, the hard part is getting the language right and getting it passed through the state tax department to get the appropriate language. Once you have that appropriate language, it's all I do is send it to the vendor and the vendor adds it to our ballot. That part, I think you guys could put, could get together fairly quickly depending on how the state tax department moves. I think the first thing that you need to figure out from the state tax department is if you can have two levies running at the same time for, to benefit, because I believe that the previous levy, and I'm just going off the top of my head because I didn't even know that I was supposed to stay here today.
Thank you for staying.
Oh, you're welcome. I think that the previous levy earmarked money for the ice rinks.
Yes.
Yes.
So, if we ran a levy for the pools, that would be a distinct item, potentially. We'll have to check.
Well, yeah, I think that's what the state tax department would work with you on is if you named specific things that were in a previous levy, you couldn't name the same things to get money from a second levy. So, you would have to word it or earmark it in a different fashion in order to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish.
Right. So, if we wanted to revitalize Krebs and Marilla Pool, we could specify that in language and that wouldn't overlap with the ice...
And I think they also talked about pools in the previous, again, I'm just...
I have it right here and you can have it. Yeah, for this pool, no, it was specifically the Morgantown ice...
Yeah.
...arena.
And I'll give you this, a copy of, because I thought it was really, I have some more things to give you, so. I apologize.
You got worried he's got there, Tom.
Oh, yeah. You won't believe what I have.
Paul, back his time, so he can...
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
He can continue his thoughts.
Yes, I apologize, Paul.
No, no worries. So, the, kind of the broader discussion is, and what we got into a little bit last night is, is really looking at what are all the options on the table. And so, this is a answer. It may not be the answer. And so, I think to really fully vet this and explore and so, you know, that's what, you know, Deputy Mayor Presides is conveying is, you know, there's an expectation from the, the community that really identified these needs and hoping that we can come up with an expeditious solution. But, but at the same time, kind of what many of us were talking about, what I was advocating is really doing our due diligence. So, you know, how can we kind of mesh this and put together a pretty nice package that's clear and comprehensive as we present to the voters? But, so, as we kind of examine these possibilities and since we're really talking broader concepts at this point, you know, and at the same time being conscientious of that, you know, we have many other projects that are going on that you alluded to, such as the runway extension and the like. And so, they're all equally important, but what's really been brought to the forefront is, you know, the recreation component, green spaces and quality of life from a broader perspective. So, that's really from conveying and behalf of the rest of the council, I've wanted to articulate with you and, you know, appreciate this opportunity to have this, this conversation and hopefully come up with a, a good, you know, path forward. So, and I think we can pursue those projects simultaneously. The airport is something I'm committed to as well. I think that's another economic, a huge economic generator for our community. So, I think, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to pursue one and finish one and then line up the next one. We can do these things simultaneously. We're flexible. We're talented. We can take care of these things simultaneously. My thought on that.
I'm just curious about your thought on the county's relationship with Bow Park. The figures came up in a previous meeting where the city was supporting Bow Park to the extent of $1.17 million and then the county's contribution was $50,000 earmarked for a specific Bow Park program. So, I just am curious about your vision for Bow Park and how you see it as an essential component of the, of the county because users are about split 50/50 of Bow Park facilities.
No, I, I'm one of those users of Bow Park. I currently participate in the adult, actually 50-year and older softball league. I know, Paul, you participate in the hockey. Again, I'm perfectly, it is my vision that we, we work together in a better, in a better manner. Like, for instance, the subject of Mylan Park came up last week and it was a question of whether that was a competitor to the city or not. And I think Counselor Celine hit it right. It's an asset.
Yes.
And we need to look at things like that, you know, from the city. It doesn't necessarily have to be inside your borders, that we have a more of a, of a overall county perspective in our inventory for recreational products. So, that, that is the vision that I would like to see is getting, trying to get away from this being a, oh, this is ours and this is yours. And again, we say county, we have other municipalities. We have, you know, Westover residents use Bow Park. We have Star City residents, Granville residents use Bow Park. This, this should be a conversation that we're all taking part of and can we step up more? Obviously, yes. We, what the grand process is, is you ask us for X and it's, you know, it's generally that's what we look at and we look at, and it's more of a individual project. You know, we want you to fund this project. We want you to fund that project. It isn't, it hasn't been a, well, we need to look at a defined line item to support us or that type of stuff. But can we have those conversations? Certainly.
Could I ask about the Mylan Park facility? Because I, I would be fully in support if there were a county Bow Park that was running that facility.
No.
What troubles me is that it's a private foundation, that the foundation then controls the hours on that facility. That is, and, you know, we discussed the ball field that WV has and the issues related to that. I just, I would feel more comfortable if the county commission had ultimate control over that facility.
Well, we have, we all have a seat at the table. I mean, on a Mylan Park board, we all have a seat at the table and it's very important. I tell you, to this commission, it's very important that that is a community asset. It is not overrun and controlled by use by one specific entity. And we want to make sure that, obviously, now it's a new gem where we have, WV can compete there and now they got nine other schools there that will be coming to town to compete there. So, it is, that's a great driver, but it is very important that, you know, the high school team, the, I don't know what you call it, clubs, the clubs can use that. You know, that's very important to us. And again, the way the Mylan Park boards run is, it's, it's a cross-section of, I don't know which city members are on it.
I don't think there are any.
I just joined some. I'm trying to remember who's all on it.
There are 23 members. So, when you say...
They chose not to. Okay. I, I think we need to get a clarification and I think this is a perfect time. You asked a really good question, Mark. I think some history needs to be explained of how we got to where we are because, and I'm just going to put this out on the table. As a commissioner, I'm responsible for the residents in the county as you're responsible for the residents in the city. But the county also includes not only the City of Morgantown, but the City of Westover, City of Granville, the City of Blacksville and all the surrounding other individuals. And I don't think you understand, not you, I believe, and I'm going to just put it point-blank, that maybe after today, this stops, but I am asking that this divisive rhetoric be stopped immediately. It's not helpful.
It's not divisive rhetoric.
Let me finish.
I...
And that's what I'm talking about. It is divisive because we need a plan. So, my, I agree with what the city manager said last night. I think the important thing is if you want to come with a levy or whatever you want to do, as he said, there were two things he said that I really appreciate. One, the number one priority is the airport and I don't think there's any doubt that you have 100% support of the county commission on getting that. The problem is no one, it's not the glamorous. That's the problem. People more are worried about the forests of the Bow Park or the facilities and so on. So, that's where you hear a lot more rhetoric on. What you cannot do is piecemeal it. And what I would recommend first is you have it a group, Bow Park. You have a board. The board should be making the recommendations, then Melissa comes and then, you know, you meet and then it goes to city council. And I think that's what you were basically saying last night and I 100% agree with that. But you need to get it clear that Bow Park is a city, not a county function. It is run and is owned by the city and in fact, it was a legislative process. If we were to ever go, just so you know, to a countywide system, we would have to go back to the legislature to dissolve it, something you may not know, but that's something we would have to do. But it can't be a City of Morgantown county Bow Park. It has to be Westover and Granville because they're a part of the county. With that being said, I think there's a real misunderstanding about what happened and, and I want to show you this. I went back Thursday, August 28, 2014. That's when we funded the initial process and when you talk about getting together, when the community leadership forum was actually working, everyone was at the table and we came up with an idea. And I'm going to give you the 70-page Morgantown recreational plan that I don't know you may have. And instead of reinventing the wheel, what this study said, Dr. Cartwright said, that all three programs, the ice rink, the swimming and the track, should be put in the City of Morgantown in first work. And at that time, for whatever reason, because you weren't on it, the city council members refused to do that. They were adamantly opposed. So, the second recommendation is they should all be together, which then we looked at Mylan Park. However, the city said, "Look, we really would want to keep the ice skating rink." And our committee, this whole committee, decided to go against the recommendation and allow the city to have the ice skating rink and go forward with that and make all the recommendations. So, it wasn't purposely moved out for a far distance. This was the recommendation. What we did had, was, it took four years. It took a year of discussion. It took your community town hall meetings. We had specific, we went through all the data. You're asking to do something in two weeks of a $10 million or $30 million. I just want to throw that out. That is something that is obviously going to be a concern. But if you look at this and see where we came from, the other thing was Bow Park led this. Bow Park used 30 people, and I have all letters if you want, of people not only inside the city, but outside the city, and that's where we came up with that overall approach. And that was real important. So, I want to give this to you. I also have in here the 2015 Morgantown Community Rec. Center and Iceplex feasibility study that I thought you would like to have.
Okay.
So, because I think it's important so all the city council members see that of where we came from, but I, I think we have to get away from this us against them and I agree with Sean. It's amenities. We want the people to come to this community. City council runs Bow Park and your programs. And for clarification, we give $100,000 or $50,000 for one particular reason. We have what's called an application and guideline for county grant funding. We treat every... We treat everyone equal. If it isn't one of the five elective facilities that were mandated to fill, you know, assessor's office, county clerk, sheriff, yeah, don't want to get, yeah, you know, circular clerk, you know, we are required to do that. Then we have, what we came with two years ago was a grant process because we did something, we learned something I think you also were also talking about. I know when you came in, we were giving money to people just because we've always given them money. Doesn't mean there was something actually being done. Bow Park always submitted projects. Last year they submitted, two years ago it was 100,000, this year it's 50,000. So we're going to treat you just like Westover or anyone else. But to treat you differently than other city group is something that I think would, I think would have a, I'm concerned about doing that process. I think this is a better fairer way to do that. But I wanted, you know, you to have this.
No, I just, again, Mark, I don't think you're, you're just asking questions. I don't think you're trying to be divisive, but it is a sensitive subject because there has been a, and again, you can't, we can't sit here and hold you responsible for what happened years ago, but, and I agree that, yeah, there might have been some, you know, there was, there was participation and it wasn't going to be participation with the whole Mylan project, Mylan Park project, but again, I'm interested in looking for it. But the way that thing was structured, it wouldn't have happened if it wasn't through a nonprofit. There was a lot of things of the way that you got the funding from the Ruby Foundation. You know, it is, it's a, it's a great project and it is what it is. And again, like I said, I want it to be part of the inventory and like you were asking, you started asking questions about the participation. Again, I just don't, I just joined, so I'm not sure who all is on that board, but Bow Park would be, I mean Bow Park, the Mylan Park board would be thrilled to death to have the city Bow Park participating. I mean, they want to be, to have that seen as, again, another asset in your inventory where we can work together.
No, I-
And I don't see it in competition with pools because your pools are outside summer pools. You know, you have an outside splash pad up there, but, and I think those pools need to be funded. And then, and again, I was eating lunch with Mayor Kueke two weeks ago and I was pulling my, I had, you know, those bands they give you when they go into parks. And I was pulling off, I didn't think anything of it and he made the comment, oh, I was at a bar last night.
[laughing]
And I said, well, actually I was at the Wayne'sburg Pool.
Right.
And, you know, and people vote with their feet. They want to have nice facilities and that's why I'd say, I want to have that facility in my backyard. I don't want to have to drive up the road to do it. So I agree that we need to, we need to have our facilities, and I say our, I mean county Bow Park, every, our facilities keep up with everything else this county has to offer.
But it has to be a comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And let me just say, at the end of the meeting, you put on the agenda the possibility of a city ID card. Now, if here we are trying to come up and the county's funding, say, some of the projects of Bow Park, and then down the road you decide to raise rates for those people outside the city, that's not, that's not part, we have to look at the entire plan. And that's a concern. So if you're going to consider, and I mean, I don't know, but it has been mentioned that the county would pay higher rates, then how or why would the county resident support a levy? And that's where, you need to see the bigger picture. And that's what I wanted to throw out. It's a concern that we need a clarification. And once you all decide on whatever issues it is, then we can move forward. The problem is we have five or six different concepts and we still aren't sure which one to go in. And I think you were, you were trying to get that last night. I would really hope that you do it right and comes before us because as you said, one shot is, it's hard to get it after the first time it's shot down.
Tom, we see the big picture. We see the big picture very clearly. Let me, let me just clarify that with you. We see the big picture.
Then why, okay, then what is it?
The big picture is cooperation, recognizing that we're all in this together, that Bow Park is a 50/50 patron deal. That is 50% are from the county, 50% are from the city. The city is funding Bow Park to a greater extent than the county.
Because it's a city park. You're giving nothing to the county parks, the city of Morgantown. It's a city function. I don't, I don't think, I want to get that really clear and that's something that you need to understand. Now, will people want to help? Yes. The reason, do you know what would happen if the city loses the county residents from going there? Or as you're saying, the ice skating rink, you're talking about bringing in people outside the city. So you need everyone to get, it's an amenity to come to Morgantown. And you have that amenity and we made it very clear in the Mylan Park situation, never to compete, but to actually enhance each other. That's what I like to see, but that's not what's coming out currently.
Absolutely, that's coming out. Absolutely. We want cooperation. That's why I'm meeting with Commissioner Secora for lunch and-
That, no, that doesn't count. And I'm going to be very honest. It has to be the city council and the county commission. He is one county commissioner. You are one city council member. We vote as groups, so we have to do it in a public session.
Well, that's what we're here for.
And that's what I'm explaining.
Very good. I have a few more questions.
Sure.
Just about the nature of Mylan Park. So you said a seat at the table, which I appreciate. Of course, there are 23 board members there, so one seat at the table gives you one vote out of 23. Whereas Bow Park is constructed in a different way where the city council approves the Bow Park board members, so there's some oversight that the city has over that particular board. You don't, you as a county commissioner don't have oversight over the board.
Yeah, and like you say, you're one of seven, I'm one of 23, but you, I don't feel anytime I'm in that room, like, I don't have, when I'm sitting, and again, I'm one of 23, I can't, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think I have more than enough say and the board is interested in me as my representation of the county commission. And the board would be interested in anybody else's representation as one of the council because you speak for that council and you speak for that commission. So though numbers wise, you're one of 23, but you carry a lot of weight.
Do you know how many tax dollars is going into that $42 million facility?
Well, why is it, why are tax dollars going in?
They're not.
150,000 is going.
No, that is paying for services and time. There's a big difference. So that is why it's a Mylan Park. That is why we couldn't use as a, we couldn't collect the money as a 501(c)(3). By using them, we were able to get a larger group and pool. So there was absolutely no funds, no levy, no taxes going to, that's why we went the nonprofit Mylan Park. And that's why we're building some other facilities to attract. I just want to clarify.
No, I know, and this is a fundamental difference of philosophy perhaps. That is, it sounds like you're trusting the private sector more than the public sector. I believe that facilities such as Bow Park should be in the public hands and Mylan Park is in a, is in a private hand. Members of the board include Pro Performance and Pro Performance has its flagship shop three minutes from the new facility, the new swim facility. That's just an undeniable fact. Will Pro Performance benefit financially from that? I would imagine, I would imagine. I can't say for sure, I haven't studied that economically, but they're right at the base of that mountain where the pool will be. It'd be very convenient for them to enjoy a nice relationship, a business relationship. Now philosophically, that's, that's a stance that one can have. I happen to believe that recreation facilities should be left in the public sphere.
And look why we're here now.
To talk about that.
You had two city council members, if not three, on that Bow Park board. For whatever reasons, and they weren't the only ones, the majority did not see it as a priority as we now see it. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in.
Well, I'm going to convince them that it's a priority. That's my task. I may not convince them, but we'll get there, one way or another. And that's why we're here too, to talk about cooperative relationships with the two of you. I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins isn't here.
He's at the four inch camp.
Yeah, I'm sorry, he isn't here because it would be great to hear his perspective as well.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you said you had-
Yeah, some other questions. I apologize, I cut you off.
No, I, I was, I was curious just about that. Oh, and getting back to this idea of stakeholders. So I was involved, of course, in those conversations and never at any point did I have the perception that we were talking so that a private nonprofit could benefit from our participation. I believe fully, and I know others who participated in that conversation, that we were talking about a Bow Park facility within the city. And then all of a sudden, that vision for an ice rink slash swimming pool, and those work in nice synergy with each other because the heat that's necessary to cool the ice can then heat the pool. There's some energy-saving efficiencies that take place in that relationship. So that was one of the items discussed. The track was also discussed. So the vision was to see that within the city of Morgantown and to have Bow Park run that facility. So all of the stakeholders were under that assumption. We were never told otherwise. And in fact, those meetings were conducted often at the Marilla Center, which is Bow Park's headquarters. So there was every reason to believe this would be a public entity, that the public would have a say in, have the ultimate say in because of the elected representatives the public vote for, votes for. And so when all of a sudden it's a different entity altogether out there, I wonder, what were we doing and why were we told that this would ultimately be a Bow Park facility? There was a miscommunication at best, I think.
I really think I-
Well, I can't speak to that because I wasn't here or I wasn't part of that process.
In fact, I will, I was at the actual beginning. This all process began because WVU was stopping the people from walking around the track. This is where it all began. So I had to meet with Oliver Luck and, yeah, the county commission threw me because I was the newbie. And out of that, said, well, let's, you know, as we were talking, then he said, well, you know, by the way, it's 35 years old, the swimming complex, the nauttoria. So we had the community leadership forum. So we came together. There was never by, everybody knew exactly the process. Once the city chose not to be a part of it and it moved out to Mylan Park, it was part, you'll see that's part of the document, it's part of, I can show you almost 75 pages that I have kept of all the information of the city being involved. And we, as a group, as a city, county, university and also stakeholders, said this was the best possible way to bring the best facilities and everybody share it. The key was not to have the university in charge because of what had happened with the nauttoria. So it was a completely different aspect. Everyone knew exactly what was going on. Everything was laid out. There were dozens of meetings and, I mean, I can show you all the documentation and we went through the process and this is where we ended up with. Unfortunately, it isn't, you mentioned it's that far away, but when we build the four lanes, the four lanes and the roads, 19 minutes, it'll be 10 or 15. I try and make it from here downtown to the med center and it can be 60 minutes. So it's all a matter of, once they start building these roads, the problem is that that's the area right now that is growing for facilities and we're trying to help that. But in no way do we want to compete or cause a problem with Bow Park. And I want to get that clear. As much as we disagree philosophically, we want everybody to win. And that's where the amenities are key. And that's why we wanted to keep that ice skating rink with you all because it was an important part. The reason why it's a money-making that you don't realize is it's paid for. If we now, at Assault, it's $11 million. You're not going to make money if you're going to have two facilities. You're going to be paying, it'd be very difficult to make money. It's making money because of, it's paid off and we're able to get that funds. And all that is in all those studies that you'll see.
Well, we don't necessarily think the ice rink needs to make money. That is, if it breaks even, that's terrific. What makes money is the businesses around that ice rink, the hotels, the restaurants, the people who work in the ice rink. So we, we can employ people at minimum wage of $15 an hour, give them a good salary to work in that Bow Park ice rink. And that's who benefits. It's not the city, the city doesn't have to be a moneymaker. That's not really the purpose of a city. We're not a private business. We are an entity that wants to support the community. That's mission is to support the community. And I worry that if we pull more and more people away from our downtown, we'll have a ghost town here. I mean, you've done a wonderful job of revitalizing this, this particular building and the courthouse square, but if it becomes a ghost town, then no one wins. The heart of Morgantown disappears. It goes elsewhere. It goes way beyond.
And we don't disagree. I mean, we're concerned as you are.
Yeah. So I wonder if we came to you with this $6 million request for a revitalized Kreps Pool, whether that would be something you would entertain?
In what manner?
Yeah, in what manner?
Well, you said we needed to come with specific requests, right? So $50,000 was apparently a request, although I've heard the ask was $75,000, but we'll have to clarify that. But in any case, would that be the kind of request that at least would be heard by the county commissioner or would the number be?
Were you asking it as a levy, as a bond?
No, no, as a, as a simple contribution to, or 3 million since the upgrade, let's say on Kreps Pool is, would probably be about 6 million. I handed out the list. So half of that would be 2 million.
Why, why, you have $5.2 million in your budget right now. Why can't you use that money? If you're asking money, I'm going to be specific. Line item 444 is where you have $5.2 million.
Well, we didn't, we didn't use that money, obviously. Public didn't want to use that money.
So then why would you want, so then why would you ask us to come, give you 3 million if you're sitting with 5.2 million?
Because your users are 50%. I mean, the county, well, yes, shouldn't they contribute equally to what benefits of Assault?
They are. They're paying the fee.
So are we.
The city chose to make those facilities, just like we're making these other facilities and parks. They are paying the same amount as a county resident.
In terms of-
You chose to be a city.
In terms of gate fee, not in terms of the tax dollars.
The city chose to make those decisions. And, and look, I did 14 years on city council. So I, I believe strong cities make strong counties. And it's just a different philosophical difference that I believe that you have to have a plan and an economic situation. You can't come and just ask for that money. We need to know specifically and how do we give you 3 million and not Granville or Star City or Westover?
Because we come where you can check the boxes to show you that users are equally 50/50 from city and county. So obviously, as the city manager says, we will do our due diligence and present that in a very thorough way, the way this seems to be done.
Okay.
And you can vote yes or no on it. I mean, would that be-
You can do it, yeah.
Well, again, I don't, I don't want to get into a conversation where it's tit for tat, where you use our facility, so you have to pay X and then we say, well, you use this facility, so you have to pay X. Because we, we all, I think we just need to find a way to have more of a synergistic relationship where we're all doing the same things together.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I, you know, I can point out our health department.
Yeah.
And I know they come to you guys and give them 16,000. 16,000 is a lot lower percentage of a 4 million dollar budget than 50,000 is of a 3 million dollar budget. So I don't want to have those type of conversations. I'd rather, you know, if you're asking me if you gave us a request in, in next February for 2 million dollars in a year, I don't know where we'd come up with the money.
Okay, sure.
You know, we're, we're in a very good place in the county where, you know, and it's one of my missions is to do more with less and drive our levy rates down, not drive them up. So I, you know, that's a hard, that's a hard ask, but we could certainly have conversations in regards to, you know, what, having a more universal conversation of, okay, so how can we get there and what is the plan to get there?
Sure, no, I'm absolutely in favor of more conversations like this. And again, there's some philosophical differences between Commissioners Secora and myself in terms of, I think these programs should be supported broadly with, with proper funding from the public. And I believe in progressive taxes. That is, I believe the wealthier members of the community really do owe more and should contribute more to the benefit of the greater good. That's my philosophical stand.
And they do. You live in a $50,000 house, you pay X. You put, you live in a $100,000 house, you pay twice as much.
Except with a tax, a sales tax, for instance, which is, or a user fee, which is regressive. So there, there are different measures that can be progressive and regressive.
But one of the things, and that's what, in what people want to see, that you've done your due diligence and I think people would be, if, if the county said, well, we want to go build a, a pool, put in a western in the county and come in, we'd have people, wait a minute, you know, being smart, you have one here, you have here. You know, I'd rather work together than having you do that. So we, there's things that we can do, there's things that we have to weigh. can do. There's things that we have to weigh. Well, why don't we leverage what we got and work together? So again, this is, we don't make decisions here. I'm happy we had this discussion and we should have more of them.
Yeah, absolutely.
And continue to encourage. And again, I don't, I don't, I don't take offense. You could say, well, I think you're totally wrong. But, because I don't
Commissioner Blinn would like to say that of me, for sure.
We have a difference, we have a strong difference of opinion.
Yes, we do.
Which is like, but what I would say is, one of the problems is just because it's your opinion or my opinion, the two of them will say, Tom, that wasn't the commissioner's opinion. Is that not, so that's one thing we need to get when we, if we're going to work together. We have to work it as it's a city council, it's a county commission position. Okay? And I think, I think that would be really, really beneficial.
We can have these conversations.
Yes.
You understand that I'm just me.
Yeah, I understand. You're an individual coming, which is what you
Well, you're, you're, you're a quorum here. You
Yeah, here we are.
So if I brought three of my fellow council members, that would be a quorum too. And that's, that's really all it takes, is four votes.
But if you publicly say you're coming, it's permitted of you, you know, that you're coming to a meeting or you're addressed. But yeah, that's part. What you also do not realize is, your city budget gives about $150,000 to nonprofits. We give 1.7 million. So where we try and give it to a lot, that may be why you don't see that money.
You know, if, if we change that line item, it makes 80 other decisions. And last year, we processed, I believe, 82 grants.
Right.
It makes those decisions a lot harder. So we have to live within a certain constraints we put on ourselves, but constraints we believe that the public, you know, if, if we're at a point where the, the public disagreed, they tell us. But we're, you know, it's our philosophy, or it's my philosophy to be more transparent, more responsive, more effective with every dollar we sent, we, we spend. So, yeah, we, you know, we, we give you more money, but it affects intouch and concern, or it affects senior Montagaleans. We have these conversations inside our county with, senior Montagaleans is another one, where senior Montagaleans is based here in Morgantown. And there are, there are, we are their main funding source.
And they've tried to get ahold of you.
Because funding
I've been up there. That's great.
Funding at the federal level is going away. And they're kind of like our health department. They're where, kind of like the graveyard of unfunded mandates. Every time someone, politician, and I don't consider myself one, at the state or local, at the federal level makes a decision that, well, we need to do X, it's a, it's a tax on my health department, you know, to fulfill those. It's a tax on senior Montagaleans. And that is predominantly, because I talked to people out in the western end, they think, they think senior Montagaleans is a Morgantown thing and they don't like the stigma. You know, so it is predominantly for Morgantown residents.
I didn't realize the stigma, yeah.
Oh, yes. They're worse than kids.
Remember Tom Ron.
I know.
But again, we could get into these things where, you know, we, we do, and we look at that during our time and we say, yes, but it's important we fund these things because a lot of the organizations benefit. You're the biggest city here.
Yep.
They benefit the city. So we may not have the check for Bow Park, but we are certainly benefiting all the other things that support the city.
And I appreciate both of you and the cooperation.
Well, I have an idea to end it on a positive note. I'll, I'll look to the city manager, since you're one individual, but you're the city. What about coming up with three or four possible areas that we could sit down and get small accomplishments and then continually to move forward?
That's my workshop.
Yeah. But I think it's the ideas of moving forward, yeah.
That's my workshop, but it also involves, you know, the municipalities.
Yeah, and that, and that's key. So that, yeah, that would be great. I mean, I really think that, I think we need to turn the discussion around to saying now, okay, how are we going to accomplish, here's our goals, how are we going to accomplish it?
And I don't know whether the mayor had a chance to share with you the proposal that, that we're going to start vetting. But we, we've, it's both, it's basically what we asked. We gave the, we gave the facilitator, here's what we'd like. And they, they sent it back and they checked the boxes. And once we come to an agreement with that, we're going to start moving forward. But then that person's going to reach out to each entity and have these conversations about what's your, and it's good to have an independent person say, okay, so what's your issues? And then they come to talk to us and it's like, you know, that one, that's all, I can't work. They're going to, they're going to take that information and see, okay.
Cut through all that.
And help us finds, cut through some of the personalities and help us find a solution. But you have, you have council people that haven't met other council people. I mean, it's a shame to say it, but when Paul, Bill and I started going around to Mayor Kueke, started going around all these other councils, a lot of times, that's the first time I met somebody. You know, we have your city, city Morgantown, there are council members
We got to go with living in silos.
There are people that I don't
Someone said to me, it's the best court I've heard.
It's good.
Living in silos, let's start opening the doors.
You know, we, that was the whole purpose of my workshop, is to break down those things.
Great idea.
At the end of the day, if the best case scenario is, there's, there's just more general civil conversation, you know, it's worth every penny.
Absolutely. I appreciate that idea.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for staying so long. I appreciate it. I know you're
We'll continue the conversation.
Okay.
It's exciting.
May I ask you a question? How did, how do you determine that it happens that you're participating in Bow Park?
Please, sir.
Bow Park has this
Yes, thank you.
I think what I heard is
Nine o'clock if you can
I don't remember that.
Okay, I'm glad you're
Okay.